We want to welcome everyone to our October Board Meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Michael Whedon to give him some prayer and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I bow to God for prayer. They have a following, so we're thankful just for this meeting today. We come together. We are such a spirit leading God. The decision makers, those who are on program for participation, made it all decisions be made, gotta be made in the best interest of the advancement for the education of the students. In your name, Jesus Christ, we pray amen. Does he all stand in favor, please?
Ah, let the police to defy the United States of America, interior republic for which change, my nation, the mother of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda are the consent items consisting of our agenda, minutes of the September 8th and September 14th meetings, fundraiser for the Lady Devils basketball team, an overnight field trip for the junior beta to St. Augustine, Florida, and an overnight field trip, eighth grade trip to Savannah and Tybee Island. Also policies for revision, GB Personnel Section, IDDM Alternative Education Program, and a policy for deletion, BCAEA, School Law Tribunals and Appeals.
I'll make a motion to accept.
All right, we have a motion to accept consent items by Mr. Madison.
I'll say.
I have a second by Mr. Reese. All in favor? Unions. We have one that signed up for our public participation tonight, and that's Ms. Naomi Cobb. Ms. Cobb, come forward. Thank you.
Good evening. And to Dr. Light, to ten of the schools and the board. I'm Naomi Cobb, and I'm here this evening to basically ask for your support for a second stop of bus. We did a stop of bus in January of 2019, and it was very, very, very successful. Would you say, Dr. Light?
Definitely.
There was not only cash donated, there were clothes, new clothes, jackets, not only school supplies, personal items, razors. They even brought them in gender colors, pink for girls and black for boys. It was real successful. We had a moving bus at that time. The bus went to Vales, Family Dollar, and Dollar General, to Dollar General on Elm Street. Due to this unprecedented pandemic, I am asking that we have a stationary bus this year here in the parking lot at the school board with a banner saying drop off donations for our students. So that's why I'm here tonight to ask your support, been in touch with Dr. Light. And the three days, the three dates will be November 16th, which is a Tuesday, December 8th, which is a Wednesday, and then January the 19th, which is a Wednesday, from 12 to 4 o'clock in the parking lot. Are there any questions? And Dr. Light, with the last distribution, everything came here to the school board, and Dr. Light and some of his staff distributed it by grade levels. Elementary school got what was appropriate for them. The principals were called here. We took a picture. I don't know where that picture might be. But we distributed to elementary, middle, and high school. But it was very successful, and I'm just asking for support for us to have a second. Any questions? And I will be on the bus from 12 to 4 on those three days. I will be, unless something comes up, and I'll let Dr. Light know that. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. You are a true blessing to us. We sure appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Light.
Do you have a question, sir?
I said, do you think it helped by having it at those local locations while having that? I'm just.
Say it again.
I was just, I was looking at the last time. You said it was a huge success, and we had it at some of the local locations around town. Do you think that helped? Or having it here will have the same success? I'm just, was curious about that.
I think even at the different locations, Mr. Reese, and I was on the bus at those times, and so was Dr. Light when he could join us, when he could pull away. I found that at Vales, a few people might have come. And at Family Dollar, a few people might have come. But I'm thinking this year, and with it, if we advertise it in the paper with the journal, they do such a great job. Thank y'all so much for keeping that in the paper for us. I think it's going to be successful. I think if we promote it, get it in the paper, get some flyers out, and I'll be doing that, it's going to be a success. I'll be speaking that.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, just because. Thank you.
Yeah, those locations, Mr. Reese, didn't seem to bring us a lot. I'll just put it that way.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Thank you, dear.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb.
Thank you so much. I have to go, but thank you so much. Thank you. All right, thanks.
Okay, next on our agenda are the financials. Ms. Buffer.
All right, we'll start with the general funds. You can see we've got 25% of our year complete. Tax bills haven't gone out yet, so our taxes are looking a little low, but that will improve once those bills go out. As far as the other revenues, they're looking good. The TAPT is actually a little bit over. The local other is showing over. That is some of our other tuition that I don't actually budget for, so we can change that budget if we need to. But we have a few out of state students who are paying tuition on that. But our overall is 16.77%, so not bad for this time of year. Our expenditure statement looks a little bit different. They've changed the program that I use, PC Genesis, and added the encumbrances on this schedule. You remember, starting in July, I started giving you a new schedule because that was one of the requirements from the state legislature, was that we show you what our purchase orders are. So they're trying to adapt this statement to perhaps meet those requirements, where I don't have to do the separate statement. But for now, I'm doing both, just to make sure. But anyway, on our general fund, you can see our expenditures this month are the $3,87,458.81. And we are now at 23.49% of our year with our expenditures. So at 25% of the year, that's looking good, that we're under that percentage. On our balance sheet, the cash is about $2.4 million, and our fund equity is about $1.5 million. And as you've seen, that fund equity's been going down a little each month, but that will jump back up once we get the tax revenues in. So that is not bad for this time of the year also. And that's just showing you the summary for the fund equity. On the SPOS schedule, you can see, well, let's see if it jumps forward more, Michael. That's going to be the collections for, oh yeah. The collections, you can see we had $82,242.73. That is tremendously different from last year's $54,000. So our SPOS collections continue to stay up, which is wonderful. You can see they've been improving each year for the past few years. Did want to remind you that we have this SPOS election. I think Dr. Light's also going to do that. But I just wanted to give you an idea of what this would mean if we lost this SPOS. This SPOS only goes toward our payment of principal and interest on our bond debt. We don't have any other projects. It's just that. So I looked at last year's, and you can see there's $834,669.61 last year. If we had not had that SPOS money based on the tax digest for this year, we would have had to increase by $2.775 to cover that, which is more than doubling, because right now we've got a bond tax of $2.5 million. So this SPOS makes a tremendous difference in how we pay our bonds off. So I just want to make sure the board and the public understand that. Not that I can tell anybody how to vote, but you have to vote. And now if we'll go back to the summary, you can see that in the SPOS account, we still have $255,263. In the bond tax account, we have $407,995. We paid the payment that was due September 30th or October 1st, and $383,362.50. And we still have $663,257.94 towards our April payment of $1.1 million. So the SPOS, between SPOS and the bond, we're looking good on that particular debt service. Capital projects has not changed a lot. We paid the rest of the old high school internet connections, where we've set those up in the field house, and we still have about $80,000 left for future projects. The other statements are just the financial status reports. The first one's the general fund. It looks basically like the report that I run on PC Genesis, except I've given you the monthly column as well as the year to date, just so you can kind of have an idea on that. Capital projects, excuse me, special revenue. That's all the other, you know, the grants with Title I, all of those in school food service combined. So that's the monthly and year to date on those. And then we have the capital projects. You can see we've not transferred that $50,000. So once we do that, we'll actually have a little bit more in the capital projects fund. And the debt service showing those collections coming in and that payment going out.
Any questions for Ms. Buffer? Okay, thank you, Ms. Buffer. Next, we have redistricting of school board districts.
Every 10 years, they attempt to redistrict all of the voting districts, trying to keep them as balanced as possible is the purpose. Sometimes, due to a pandemic, they don't have the opportunity to do that. So this year, they have created a redistricting recommendation. Now, currently, the way this is proposed is the exact same districts as the county commissioners. And I went through each individual board member in each district and made sure that we didn't have one board member running against another that was currently sitting in a seat. That is not an issue for us. All of the districts are very close to being balanced and very fair, and I would recommend that we approve this proposed school board redistricting lines. It does not change where a child goes to school. It's just based on voting.
Thought there was a slide with the number, actual number of them. How many people are in this?
I know we should send us have that.
I didn't put that up here, but I can get it if you want it.
She was just thinking about mentioning it, yes, so.
Okay.
I do know that we do need, the commissioners, as well as the State House, wants us to approve that this month, from our standpoint, so that we can, so they can approve as well.
They will take it forward from here.
Any questions about it? Any discrepancies anyone sees on it? Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the district. The redistricting, we'll work on that word, as presented.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Madison. Any more discussion on it? All in favor? Unions. Next, we have our school safety plan.
Annually, we try to review our school safety plan to make sure that there isn't some drastic changes that need to be made or even tweaked to try to improve the safety for all of our students. Some of the challenges of dealing with creating a safety plan is trying to deal with the horrible things that can happen. And we continue to pray that none of those ever happen in Lincoln County. But we sat on August 17th with Dr. Gumby and I and Mr. Williams, I'm going to call him Dr. Williams before it's over with, David Shanks from Homeland Security, Paul Revere from the Sheriff's Office, Leighton Taylor from the Sheriff's Office, Johnny Cobb from the Sheriff's Office, and Casey Broome from the EMTs. We sat and went through this page by page, line by line, trying to get as many recommendations from them as we could. When we completed their recommendations, then we went to the district leadership team and let the principals massage through. They took, that was on the 15th of September when they did it. Then we took it to the leadership, school leadership team somewhere between the 20th and the 24th. Once we did all of that, that same first group reviewed it and approved it, and I am bringing it forward to the board for our final approval for the safety plan. And I'm proud to say that it did meet all of the recommendations of each group. I'm very proud of our group for going through all of these. It is a tedious process, but very necessary and something I hope we never use.
No, I know you and I talked about it, but can you go, kind of the difference from a run, hide, fight, as opposed to where it was?
One of the biggest changes that has happened over the past three years is the recommendation when they have an active shooter in the school. And again, you never want that to happen. But if we have that, the new determination, or the safest determination is what they're saying now is called run, hide, fight. Run is your first option. Don't run towards the gunfire. Obviously, run away from the gunfire. Get into a safe place. That may not be the nearest classroom. That may be outside, in our case, over in the woods and hide. If you can't get away and the active shooter is right there, you're going to have to hide. And that's hopefully in a classroom behind a brick wall. And worst case scenario, if that option's not available, you're going to have to fight back because sitting still in a corner is not a good position to be in when someone else has an active weapon. So run, hide, fight is the new terminology. It's the new recommendation to try to survive an active shooter. Again, it's something I hope we never have to deal with, but it's definitely something that we are teaching in professional development and something that we have to let our folks know in case it ever happens. Dr. Gumby, is there anything that you would like to add? I know that you were a huge part of this, and I don't want to leave you out of the process.
Yes, sir.
That's good.
Yes, sir.
With the safety plan, is there any plans for the school to actually participate in a drill with the students?
We have done a drill here in the past, been three years ago because of COVID, I think. Is that right?
Maybe three or four.
Right. And then, once we completed this, then we go back to Sheriff Revere and then have his guys come over and take us through a drill or two or three, either in each school or in one school. So we definitely want to do that again.
You feel like that will take place this year?
Yes, sir.
This school year?
Yes, sir.
Any questions on it? Big book.
Without getting into too much detail, so y'all, the faculty meets, and they get some type of training, and then?
Well, the faculty has already looked through it in their school leadership. But what we'll do now is have the Sheriff's Office do a training for each school individually to give them the opportunity to ask the Sheriff's Office and those folks questions as well. In the past, it was Major Wallen and his tactical group. And then we split up into four groups, I think it was, and then allowed them to ask individual questions and provide individual training. So it was a pretty strong, pretty positive group.
So this is going to be for the teachers and students all at one time?
In the past, we've done it with teachers, not with students.
Okay. Are you, you going to do it? I mean, I don't, I don't know if good or bad of that, doing it with the students or not. I don't, I'm just.
From my experience, the teachers teaching the students what to do works a whole lot better than someone standing there in tactical gear that can definitely scare some of the kids. So the teachers handle that much better, and they're very comfortable with their teachers, obviously. So in my experience, we ask them to do that.
Okay, we have to approve the changes on this? So any other discussion on it? Any questions on it? Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendations of Superintendent May and changes to the safety plan.
I'll second it.
And a second by Mr. Madison. All in favor? Unions. High and Middle School Media Center, Florida.
Through our CARES 3 Act, we are trying to accomplish many things, trying to make the school not only cleaner, but also better equipped to be cleaned and for us to handle improving the school. We received three proposals to replace the carpeting, which obviously holds germs and everything else, at the middle, high, library, media center, and in the nurses' office. And part of that bid or that proposal, would be a better term, part of that proposal was to remove the carpet, remove the bookcases, and then replace them after we put Texas granite in there, which is much easier to clean and obviously more sanitary. That being said, we received three proposals. The top proposal, as it says in the write-up, the top proposal is the company that did the cafeteria in the elementary school with Texas granite. They did a very good job. McWaters completed the gym floor in the elementary school. I think it looks very good as well. Lively is a local company that has donated flooring in the elementary school teacher's lounge and has done a good job for us. I feel that it would be appropriate for us to award them the position. Yes, it's a little bit more money, but it is a local company that has always done a great job for us, and I know will continue to do so. They also did the band room, so they do a very good job. And we want them to receive the bid if possible, based on my recommendation that we award them the bid for the middle and high school.
You mentioned about them being local.
Yes, sir.
You definitely see their signs. They support all of our programs. For the, I think they're on the school board. I know they're on signs on the different fields. Any discussion about Superintendent's recommendation?
I'll make a motion to accept the Superintendent's recommendation for lively floor.
I'll second it.
I'll second. By Mr. Madison. All in favor? Unions. Next is policies for revision, FDC naming facilities.
This policy came up in discussion last month, so it has to lay on the table for 30 days after we read through this. But the change is on the second page, part of a very positive discussion that I'm glad that we were able to have here. But the change is on number three, page two. Excuse me, the board will review the information provided to make a determination and/or recommendation. Final approval for naming a facility in honor of an individual or group requires a majority vote of 3-2, with all board members required to be in attendance and voting. And that last highlighted section is the change. The next one down is.
Actually, that one shouldn't be on the table.
But we made a change. We have to leave it on the table.
No, I'm talking about the alternative.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was actually done last month. I just didn't get it up there.
Okay.
But we do have one for review.
And then we do have a policy for review, which is GAA, compliance and grievance. It is fine the way it is written.
Do we have any more discussion on the naming facilities or the complaints and grievances? All right. Next, we have Superintendent's reports and informational items.
We have just completed tonight, and I want to thank everybody for being there. We just completed tonight the Teacher of the Year banquet. We did it a little different this year on teacher and principal recommendation to have a true banquet in the evening, so parents and significant others could attend. We had three that we honored tonight. Ms. McCaskill at the elementary school. There you are, Casey Wilson, move back. And Mr. McGill in the high school are the Significant Teachers of the Year in their individual schools. And it was noted tonight that Ms. McCaskill is the District Teacher of the Year. We want to congratulate all of them publicly and continue to applaud them for the great things they do in their classrooms. Thank you all.
Y'all stand in front, y'all stand behind you.
We didn't say that.
I got accused of that earlier.
Three, one, two, three.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Another Superintendent's report item is the SPOS voting. We want to encourage everybody on the 2nd of November to go out and vote. All I can say is to go vote. But as Ms. Buffer identified, every dollar of our SPOS goes towards paying off the middle and high school. That's all we can use it for. That's what it's designated for. So that's what we use it for, and we encourage everybody to continue to do that. Been working on some items that the board has requested. Got the engineer from our architectural firm, which is Buckley &amp; Sons, to come visit the elementary parking lot and to give us some recommendations and some direction. As you remember, we had a company come, all right, we had one proposal from a company that does a lot of roadwork. That proposal was extremely high, $331 and some change. After the engineer was here, he made a couple of recommendations, adjusted some of the quantities that you identified early, and you did as well. And his recommendation for the cost came back to $139,991. Now, he can't do the work, but he's able to identify, which we greatly appreciate. He was able to identify four different companies that they work with that can do this work for us and be close to the same price. Now, Pat met with one of those companies today, and we should get a price back from them soon. But he definitely said the price that we first got was too high. And as Pat identified, it was way too high. So we are working on that, trying to get the exact and final to you, so we have three. We did get proposals back on the Dependacoat as we were directed for the old high school. This is the only one we've gotten so far. We expected to have two more. I don't have those two yet. But the first proposal for the Dependacoat, which is that lifetime event, is $68,775. Now, that's for the entire school. That's not for just the front. I don't want to confuse anybody. We've asked for the entire school to be done. Traditional painting by the same company of Dependacoat was $51,232. Now, that's just the first one that's come back. I know that there was conversation about Dependacoat because it lasts so long. So we're working on it. As soon as we get all of the proposals together, we'll bring them to you. But I wanted you to know where we were, and that we were trying to get everything in as soon as we can. The 20th, I believe it is, of October, they are supposed to deliver and start installing the new dishwasher at the elementary school, which also comes out of our CARES month. So it's been down for a little while. It's a very old machine that should have been replaced years ago, but thank God we can replace it, and that'll get done as soon as possible, but definitely this month. So just trying to keep everybody up to date to what's going on.
Any questions for, any of those items? Okay, need a motion to go to executive session. A motion by Mr. Madison, second, by Ms. Sparksdale. Want to call our meeting back to order? The superintendent has made a recommendation, and I make a motion that we hire Randy Wright for the custodian position in the middle and high school. Have a second by Ms. Sparksdale. All in favor? Unions. The superintendent has recommended, and I make a motion that we hire Stephen Collins for the maintenance. the maintenance position for the district. Second by Mr. Madison. All in favor? Superintendent has recommended, and I make a motion that we hire Stephanie Drake as a parapro for the Lincoln County Elementary School. Have a second by Ms. Barstow? All in favor? Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, second by Mr. Madison. Thank you.
Thank you all.